Okay, tonight's a study session agenda, so we don't have public comment. We'll just go straight into the discussion items. We have a staff presentation on the off-leash dog.
I'm Mayor Council Steve Romer Parks Development, Operations Manager. So tonight I wanted to give you a quick update of what's been going on, discussing the potential of dog parks in the city of Buellian. And to date, we've had a little bit, kind of backtracked a little bit here. When I first came here, actually about three plus years ago, I was surprised, come from the agency I did down south, that there wasn't a dog park here in Buellian. And real quickly, it was obvious that Seattle is very popular and cities around us are real popular. We started getting some emails and phone calls from the folks asking why they want a dog park. And myself and the park board had actually been discussing it a bit for the last year and a half before it really came to a head recently. So just a quick background, all through 2012, I myself and the parks board talked about the potential of a dog park. The P-Town Dog Group got kind of organized around August, September, and contacted myself when they contacted. I actually came to the city council between September and October, they came to the park board, the board of the city council requesting that we look into the potential feasibility of getting a dog park. In December, a group, real interesting, saw it in the news after the city council meeting called LA Studio, and I really want to mention these guys. It's a landscape architect firm at the moment, and is doing some pro bono work for me. And they're actually the ones that are making the slides you'll see tonight, the visuals for me. They're helping me putting together design work, so I have some presentation materials to bring to you and the public. In February of 13, staff and the consultants, as well as some of the park board members, looked at various park sites and evaluated which ones had the best potential for dog parks. And really what we're looking for was pretty much unutilized parks that were under our control. So we're trying not to look at parks that weren't ours yet, you know, potential future parks we could get from other agencies, or ones we had 40-year agreements with to use their land, but wanted to look at parks that were ours, that were underutilized, and you know, pretty much being unused and has some space. In March 13, I had my first real public meeting, where we came forward and presented two site layouts at two parks. And the two parks we brought up were Salmon Creek Park and Hazel Valley Park. Okay, before I get into that, I just want to say why, why a dog park's important, real quickly. A dog park has a lot of positive social aspects for the owners especially, as well as for the dogs. It's a real big social network. It provides a forum for information, especially with a group like Carers, or some of the other dog worship groups, and educational opportunities, would have a location to hold classes and things like that, to share information. The increased positive park activity, especially in a park where we might have some concerns or issues currently with fangirls and graffiti, that sort of thing, it kind of helps eliminate those negative impacts. You've got a bunch of good folks with their dog down the park all day. Currently, we have some proactive volunteers that are willing to promote and help with the park maintenance, and actually help with keeping the park going. And lastly, the existence of a dog park in any community is an asset, and it'd make a city like Buellian more desirable to live in. I truly believe that. From my past experience, before I came here, I designed and built six dog parks in my previous life, and I see how they evolved, and I see the impact they make to the parks, and I see the positive aspects of dog parks. Okay, as I mentioned, two sites we looked at were Salmon Creek Park and Hazel Valley Park. Salmon Creek's up off of 118th, just to the west of 4th Avenue, towards the north end of Buellian. It's just under five acres, that site. And the Hazel Valley Park site is just one residential lot away from Puget Sound Park off of 4th Avenue by 126. Okay, when we looked at the two sites, we want to look at the opportunities and constraints. And this is before I met with the public. The opportunities we saw at Hazel Valley Park were, there's an existing path, there wasn't a whole lot of structural use there. There used to be an old playground before we got to King County, but that was gone. So pretty much what was going on, the public was walking that trail, was the main use, as well as also bringing their dogs to that park and letting them run off-leash. There's existing fencing surrounding three out of four sides of the park, there's existing park furnishings, tables and benches, and there's actually a water source at this particular site, a water meter up on 126 that we could use. The constraints would be that the site, the dog park, would take up most of the site, for sure, just to get a decent-sized dog park that people would be happy with. It does abut residential houses, especially there on the east side, where in their backyard, pretty close to their backyard, is our fence, and then a lot of them have their second fence on their private property. There's limited parking, actually, up on 126, except if you just go, like I say, one lot over, just to the east, towards Puget Sound Park, there's all kinds of street parking. And we have a lot of parking there, Puget Sound Park. And that walk from the car is really no more than any other dog park. You'd go to, really, to expect people to keep it on leash. Obviously, we can eliminate the use of that pathway if we built a dog park and cut this parking out. The, there is limited visibility from 126 or 128 looking into the park, it's kind of a long, narrow park. And probably the other one that we heard quite a bit from one or two neighbors was, some of the neighbors were allowed, it looks like, to put a gate in the King County fence around the park, so they have direct access from their backyard into the park. If we were to build a dog park and it was, their area was within that, they wouldn't build it, just go in and out, that would be a security concern with the dogs, really wild. The other site is Salmon Creek, it's a little bit bigger park. The majority of the park space would remain open as it currently is, because it's quite a bit bigger. Both these sites we were proposing would be about an acre and a half, and I'll show you the layouts in just a second. There's quite a bit of parking on 118th, however, when I'll show you the slide about with the neighbors, I understand there are some conflicts, potentially with school programming of a field across the street. There's only one resident that's directly abuts the space, and it's his house right here. Otherwise, we either got a street like 118th, or we have the private street on 6th Avenue there, and some of the folks, I'll tell you about some of their concerns as well. There's some real nice mature wooded areas here that will make use of, so there'll be some shade. The constraints are, there's no existing fencing, so this site, differently than Hazel Valley, I'd have to put in a lot more fencing. There's no existing pathway to get to it from the street, or inside of it. And there's no existing water meter, so that'd be an additional cost if we were going on this one. And it's further away from the city center, and away from your materials, so if you're living in downtown Buellian, or more in the cluster downtown, it'd be a farther drive for you to get to this site. Okay, let me go through Hazel Valley real quick. So just to get you oriented, 1st Avenue is kind of the lower end of the slide. This is 126, and then 128th is over on this side of the park, and then 4th Avenue is kind of right over here, a little farther than that, but just to get you oriented. Puget Sound Park, like I say, is right here. So, at Hazel Valley Park, what we're looking at doing is putting a fence across the entire width of the park, to make about an acre and a half. People would use existing pathway, this front area of the park would all remain the same. People would use this pathway to get in, and then would have a gated unleashing area right here, and kind of a lobby, so you'd unleash your dog, if you went to the right, you could go into the small dog area, if you went to the left, you could go into the large dog area. And then outside of the unleashing area, there's additional surfacing with some other material, other than just grass, because that's going to take the brunt of the abuse with everybody hanging out there and all the dogs. We'd also bring water into the site. There's a water meter existing right here off of 126, probably gives water to the site. So the drawback on this site is mainly probably the residents on this side, right up to their, this back fence here, and we could potentially, if we were to go down this road, you know, improve the fencing, put screening up, things like that, but that's definitely a concern we've heard. We have heard some concerns about dog noises and that sort of thing, potentially, and I'll go through those a little bit more. But just to give you the general layout, it's an acre and a half, and we're looking at, pretty much cut the park in half, right about there. Okay, so what we heard from the neighbors is that they're concerned about the impacts with the dogs, especially if they have a dog, and they have one fence in between their dog and our dog park, there could be some back and forth going on there, and I understand that. They may not be able to use their gate from their backyard into the park. I heard that when I was looking at the sign-up sheet, I didn't see anybody, I saw that conflict when I was looking at the residents on the site, so I'm not quite sure if someone at the meeting was particularly being impacted that way. There were a couple gates, but they were outside of our, those fences, so it wouldn't impact them. One person, you know, said they work at night, sleep during the day, concerned about noise, and I hear that, potentially. However, my experience with dog parks is the dogs, you know, may tend to bark as they're coming in, but once they get in there with their friends and they're off their leash, they don't bark nearly as much as you'd think they would, especially when they're on their leash. And that owner lives right next residence, right here, to the west side of the park. And what we did is, the fence of the park is actually right here, so the dogs should be more down in this area, and a little away from that resident there. The park trail is used now by a lot of neighbors to walk around, and they don't like the idea of being taken that away. And when we looked at the site originally, we understood that, but we knew Puget Sound Park, that real nice new trail around it, just a residential lot away to the east. I always ask, why don't I use Puget Sound Park, it's right around the corner, it's a lot bigger, you've got a lot more space. And really, my answer to that is, and why I did look at some of these other undeveloped larger parks, was this park is pretty limited on what you can do with it. I can't put a normally baseball field here, I can't put a soccer field. There's not a whole lot of opportunity at this park. A park like Puget Sound is a park where we want to have a pretty long process, meet with neighbors, meet with residents, and master plan the park, and decide what are bigger visionists for a park like that, rather than just kind of dropping something like this in. So that's why I didn't look at a park like Puget Sound Park, that was kind of a bit clean slate. And then why change this nice neighborhood park? You know, again, the reason we're proposing the change is that we're hearing from residents that they'd like to have an opportunity to have a dog park, and this park appeared to be underutilized from our perspective. Okay, we'll go to Salmon Creek. So Salmon Creek Park is just under five acres, it's a big rectangular park. And topography-wise, just to understand the site, right along this wooded area is a hillside, so the park drops off significantly down this way. This is 118th Street on the south side, and this is 6th Avenue southwest up here, this is a private residential street that ends right here. So what would we do at this site? We'd come in from 118th, that's where we'd direct people for the main parking area, and we'd create a soft service pathway to get into the dog park. You'd come into the dog park, this would be unleashing area, and this would be a lot like what we did at Hazel Valley. And then small dogs could go off to the right here, and then the large dogs could go in this direction, and we have small and large here as well. We'd get water to the site, and that's going to come from the street over here somewhere, that'd be a little additional expense over Hazel Valley, because we don't have one here currently. And this area, it'd be more expensive, as I mentioned earlier, because we'd have to build this entire fence, it'd be brand-new, there is no fence existing. So all those fences would be brand-new, the pathway would have to be brand-new, and the water source would be brand-new. So those are the bigger impacts on this site. So what we did, we stayed on this upper lawn area, this is all fairly level, and there's some real nice mature trees here that provide shades. And there's a little bit of topography over this end, it drops down a little bit over in this, but it's kind of interesting, we took about a half to third, about a half of the upper lawn area, leaving quite a little lawn space here. The one other, the other concern, and I'll just go with what the neighbors said at this point, the one concern I was skipping number two is 118th, where we assume all the parking would be, and that's where we would direct people to get to this park. Does get used because of the, right across the street, New Star High School, just to the south, or New Star School, there's a little ball field there, and it gets programmed by Highline High School. And unfortunately, Highline hasn't gone back, I'm trying to get a little better idea of how many times over here that's programmed out, so we might see those trafficking bags. So that's a concern. A very big concern that I have, that I'm hearing from the neighbors, is over here, 6th Avenue southwest, which is a private street, it's on the east side of the park and it deadens here. Without anything big at this park, they do already have some concerns and impacts with people that come in, like from 116th up north and coming to the park, and try to park on the street, or if they can't park, try to turn around, it's a real narrow, private street. So that's definitely a concern, and if we went forward with this one, we'd want to, maybe like work the public works, and we could sign these or landscape elements or something, maybe try to keep folks out of there. But we would always direct people to the parkings on 118th and having them coming from the south side. The, oh, there was one other complaint off of here, 118th and 8th, there's a, there's an uncontrolled intersection here, and one of the neighbors, or a couple of neighbors mentioned that, they guess are pretty nervous, is that this intersection already, due to the hill coming up 118th, there at 8th Avenue, they thought maybe with the additional traffic, we might warn the stop sign, so that might be something we'd want to look at. Probably the last thing again is, you know, why change this nice neighborhood park? And the answer, you know, I'm giving is the same, I'll pretty much give on Hazel Valley, is it's seemingly unutilized, it has a lot of space. I won't be taking the entire park, again, this is about an acre and a half. It is nice, I'm a neighbor right across the street, it's sure nice, you know, not having a whole lot of activity in there, this would definitely increase that a little bit, for sure. But, so that's what we were from the neighbors, some pretty good, you know, little general concerns these neighbors had with Salmon Creek. So my next steps are, is get your feedback, you need more additional feedback from the folks here tonight, if they have a chance to talk. Evaluate if there's any other potential locations, and what the real community support for moving forward with this project is. My next public meeting, well, the revised presentation will be May 8, at a Parks and Forest Board meeting, at the same location, up there St. Bernard's. And then I'll, after that, I'll develop a final program proposal, and bring back to council with a recommendation from myself and Jerry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Romer. And so, as I mentioned at the start, this is a study session format, so ideally, we'd like to have as open of a discussion as possible, so if anyone here would like to comment, just as we're discussing it, ideally come up to the microphone there, so everyone who's watching at home can hear your comments. And I'll just try to take people in order, council members and members of the public, and for any questions or comments on the issue at hand. So I'll start off, we've got a couple of council members here, so I'll start off with Councilman Robinson.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. The first one I had, I was a little disappointed that both of the parks turn up hard north into the city, and are only half a mile apart. And I was wondering why, in particular, Lakeview Park wasn't on our list, was that looked at?
Yeah, it was. The reason I didn't go forward to Lakeview, I mean, something we could definitely, you know, look into further is because we don't own the property, it's Highline School District property, we have a 40-year lease for the bottom half of the park, so I'd have to, we'd have to enter into a long-term lease for the upper half, if we're going to develop it. I know recently they were trying to even sell that piece of the property for development, so I'm not sure what their plans are with that, I don't know, short or long term it might be, but it's certainly something that has potential. That upper would be about an acre, maybe a little bit more than an acre, if we cleaned it up and wanted to develop that.
Well, I looked at it, it looked like a great spot for an off-leash park, and probably 40 years would exceed the life of any improvements we could do as part of an off-leash area.
Yeah, yeah, if that's something, you know, council wants me to talk to Highline School District and see if they'd be interested in that, I just wish, what I was looking for was something under our control, more than trying to guess what they're going to do a couple years down the road, but it's definitely a site, you know, potentially worth looking at.
Well, I was, I was trying to do a little research on my own, and I was trying to figure out how far people, I wondered, do you have any information, how far people are willing to go to get to the off-leash park?
Just based on experience, it really depends on the size of the park, you know, destination park, like in Marymore Park, it's a regional, people will come from, you know, easily over 10 miles away, something that's an acre and a half, and I've got, there's parks up in White Center, like another half a mile from Salmon Creek, that's like eight acres up there, we've got Grandview Park. Personally, I would think it pretty much just draw from the, you know, like five, you know, five mile radius to about.
Yeah, well, the reason I was asking, I was thinking it'd be better to have, you know, one on each end of the city, rather than just one on the fourth end. The, but I, I went out and I walked through both parks, and I was, on Saturday, when the sun was out, and I was surprised that there was, I saw one family at Hazel Valley, and they said they didn't ever see anybody else there, and two people walking their dogs, and one fellow walking his dog through Salmon Creek, and that was it. But also, I wanted to put in a word for the kids at New Star, I believe, they're the ones that cleaned up all the brush at Salmon Creek, right? They did a beautiful job.
They did, and that's why you notice I didn't touch their area, because we've been working with them, that's why I didn't go down those hillsides at all, because they pulled out a ton of blackberries over the last four years, and put in a lot of plantings. Originally, I was looking at going down that hill from that upper lawn area, and I decided not to, because I destroyed what they'd been working on.
That's a really nice park there, Bill. But, okay, so, my comments, and the other thing I have is the comment about the fencing, I looked at the fence there, Hazel Valley, and frankly, I wouldn't trust that as a fence for an off-leash area. There's nothing to keep dogs from digging under it, there are sections of it that are down or missing on the south end of the park, and along the southwest side of the park. And I was, that's another one, I couldn't find the standard, currently there was a standard for fencing off-leash areas, and I couldn't find anything, so is there a standard for that?
Yeah, most of them are four feet, mostly four feet, the dogs, I mean, some dogs, on rare occasions, will jump over, most of them don't, because all their friends are inside.
Well, that's only a three-foot fence there now, so to do it properly, we'd be doing a whole fence there anyway.
I, most of it, yeah. For sure, the south would be east side, the west side would be a little more intact.
Actually, I thought the west side would be worse than the east side, yeah. But I just, you know, my concern with that is if we were going to depend on that fence that's there, my concern would be liability if a dog either went over the fence or under the fence, and either got injured or injured somebody outside the park.
Yeah, you know, I didn't bring any cost estimates today, because that's a further evaluation, you know, I want to look at, because that's what the neighbors concerned, actually, potentially dogs getting through under fences or mixing, so we would really have to do a thorough evaluation of every foot of that fence, and then kind of a final cost estimate before we did compare apples to apples.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see something, I don't have other people in the council, but I'd like to see them include a park in the south end of the city. And, and between the two, you've got picked out for the north end, my preference would be Salmon Creek Park.
Deputy Mayor Correa?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Councilman, remember Robinson mentioned liability, if a dog jumps over the fence and hurts itself or hurts someone else. Do we have to, do we need special liability for dog parks? What kind of insurance coverage?
No, it's never, never been a concern, I came from a very large city, when I came here, and, no, there was nothing, correct my builder, not to that, I don't know.
Because in our, in our report further in the packet, it mentions liability for animal control, if an aggressive dog bites somebody, so just wondering what kind of liability for dog parks?
The, excuse me, the insurance pool that we belong to, WCIA, I'm sure has other cities in their membership that have off-leash dog parks, but I'm also sure that they would want to make sure that the standards that do apply to the fencing and those kind of things are being addressed. But we would want to alert or notify WCIA before we added this to our park system, and make sure that they were okay with it.
So in this process, could be that, could that be one of the steps that we're vetting?
Sounds like it'll be one for sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Two other things.
I had a comment on that, because I looked into that, the only liability I found arose where there was negligence in the maintenance of the fencing around the park, and dogs actually got out of the off-leash area, and then either got injured or injured somebody else, or an animal outside the off-leash area.
That does make sense to me, liability that would occur, or injuries that would occur within the park, generally, I think, would be subject to the recreational immunity statute of the state, which says that if you're hurt within a park, or engage in activity that you don't pay for, that the city is immune from liability for that.
The other two things, I noticed, so, Steve, I'm going to ask you to help me out on the Salmon Creek Park. You mentioned there's one residence that abuts the park, but I noticed that there's like five or six.
Yeah, what I was referring to on the, on the screen, is directly abutting the park, like the same situation Hazel Valley is, there's just this one neighbor to the north, kind of on the northwest corner, right there. Right now, there's no fence in between the park and that person's house at all.
But how about these other four here, do their properties?
Oh, but I'm not going down there.
Okay, got it.
Yes, my fence line stays up on the hill.
Okay. What about the lot right next to that house? Is that vacant, right?
This one?
Developed it? Yeah.
Yeah, it's vacant right now.
That's only been developed.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Okay. So, I would, I would like to see us looking at a couple more sites, and seeing if there are less impacts on residential houses. And Jerry, I would agree that Lakeview actually is a great park, because it, I think there's only one side of the park, and right now, that's all vacant land, so there's, there might be one residence that would be impacted, but there's streets surrounding the whole park. So then my third question, concern, is that we have an unleashed area and a leashed area of the parks. To bring the dog into both of these parks, I have to go through a leashed area of the park.
Correct.
So I, I have two dogs, and I take my dogs to off-leash parks and on-leash parks. And it's very common at off-leash parks for people to open their car door and just let their dogs go, not following the rules that are established at that park. So how are we going to enforce that, and protect that neighborhood from a higher increase of off-leash dogs, not in the dog park, but in the surrounding area?
Boy, that's, like you said, it's a tough one, because it happens pretty much everywhere you're at. This one, at least, I have the advantage, you know, currently of having a very organized volunteer, the P-Town Dog Group. A big part of this is going to be volunteer-built, volunteer-sponsored. I at least have a lot of folks that are involved in the community, that can help with public education upfront, making sure the ground rules are as clear as possible. You know, and the reality of it is, if we don't get them in the beginning, and set the rules, and do it by peer pressure, just like a lot of the dog activities inside of a dog park, it's almost unenforced, a impossible situation to keep somebody from breaking the laws, we can't be out there with animal control police, need to watch something like that.
So I encourage us to pick a location that maybe has less impact on neighborhoods, and is there anything in the northeast redevelopment area, or south? Looking forward to hearing your information, thank you.
Councilman Robinson?
Mr. Romer, I want to thank you for the time and effort that you've put into this, and we'd also again recognize LA Studios for their efforts. That was fantastic, and then stepped up and volunteered to build this. My hope is that this will be an all-volunteer effort, and that it will be constructed with contributions. I think there's enough interest in this community that we will be ready to step up. I want to point out, we have three pet stores, a feed store, several animal food tandries, natural animal food pantry. This is a community that's definitely interested in their pets, and having fun with them. Uh, this is a community that's definitely, uh, interested in their pets and having fun with them. Um, my concern is, is, uh, um, right now, we have two dog parks in, in the area, West Prest in Grandview, West Prest is, uh, just on the other side of, uh, Roxbury, about a half mile north of Roxbury. In Grandview, it's owned, uh, at, uh, just off of I-5, um, almost to Midway. Um, so there is some distance for people to go. My concern with Salmon Creek Park is the proximity to, uh, Puget Sound Park, I mean, excuse me, um... No, 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 West Prest Park. And, uh, um, you don't have the two, two dog parks that close to each other, is that really serving, serving our, uh, our citizens? And, uh, of the, uh, of the two, my preference would be for Hazel Valley. The situation is, is that when we, um, annexed North Burian, uh, we inherited several parks that weren't developed and underused. And like Councilmember Robinson, I've been through those facilities several times. And apart from occasionally seeing somebody, uh, walking their dog there ironically, um, basically, uh, the park isn't used very much. I talked to one resident and he said somebody comes by and once a day, sits on one of the benches and, and thinks. And, uh, kids come by and do what we used to do when we were teenagers every once in a while. So that's all the activity that he sees in the, at Hazel Valley. So my, uh... My thought is that Hazel Valley is the most developed of the, of the two parks. And, um, as such, with the proximity of the water meter, the pathway already in, I think that would be the best course for us to follow. My concern with Lakeview is, again, as you expressed, uh, we don't own that, so there would be, uh, uh, problems possibly with the school district. And also, as I understand it, um, Bearcats use that, that site now to practice on, uh, I think we called something mentioned about that. So, um, I don't wanna, I don't want to, uh, take away that use from, uh, the Bearcats, I know they've come to us before and asked for, uh, for a site and they're able to work this out with the school district, so. Anyway, uh, I have a concern about, uh, taking away that opportunity from.
Yeah, I know I want to mention that, but Bearcats, if they do use it, they use it at the lower park, the grassy area.
Yeah.
This, this is the upper park, um, so there's that, it goes to the rest equal to get to the lower grassy area.
Yeah.
So the, so the upper part of it as well.
There'd be some significant demolition cost, take out foundations of this problem and development cost, so that, that'll be something else to look at, so.
Councilmember McGill?
I share Councilmember Block's concerns about Lakeview Park. I'm pleased that for both of the parks you've brought to us, that you're developing a plan to get community input. I think that's going to make the difference between a successful dog park and one in a problem, so I'm really happy about that. The other comment that Councilmember Robison made is we need a park in the south end. I think the Parks Department has been working on parks in the south end for as long as I've been in the city of Burian. So it's been a high priority. We continue to look for land that's available, the one piece that we had essentially went away and I can't remember why, Councilmember Clark will remember why that didn't work out, it was Roderick and Gardens. But a concentrated effort to find a south end park would certainly be appreciated by this council. My concern that Councilmember Block didn't mention is the area in the lower park is used by kids a lot, it's also the park of choice for preschool kids. Not that a dog would ever get loose and harm a kid, it could be a scary event, so I'm concerned about the compatibility of the dog use park with existing use of the park. I'm also concerned that it's next to 160th, which is an extremely busy street with no parking. So the only parking would be on the western side and my recollection is that is a busy neighborhood and I think probably has six houses across the street from the park itself. And I also am concerned that...
Councilmember McGill, point out, I have a question here referring to Lakeview Park.
Lakeview Park.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it might be eighth or tenth, there's houses on the western side. And I also am concerned that I really don't want to get into a situation where we're in a partnership, I'd rather it be a city-owned park, that would definitely be my preference, thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you. I would like for you to look further at Lakeview myself. The, what happened with the Roderick and the park, you're referencing Councilmember McGee, is that the city dragged its heels so long in that time period when we were looking at that park, that the owner got tired of waiting and sold it for development, so that is totally gone now. But anyway, I would like for you to take a look at, um, Lakeview, I, I like the idea of one in the north and one in the south for the convenience of our residents. And that's the only one in the south that I can think of that's not already located on a, on an existing school property that's being used for school. And, and other than that, I like the idea of Hazel Valley. We, hopefully, we can accommodate the noise factors somehow for the one person that sleeps during the day and know that, um, uh, swing shift and, and graveyard folks, uh, maybe may consider it, so I hope we can do something there. If there's another place in the south end, I would love to hear, I just can't think of one.
Councilmember Ray?
I'd also like to, in fact, came up to my mind also about Nira as an area that has novel areas and not really close to the residential, um, building at this point in time, that might be a very difficult also. And a question, and this may be a little bit early, but asking with financing, I'm kind of curious, we're going to take a look at what's going to be the financing for the initial implementation and then the sustainability of maintaining the park so suitable.
Yeah, and, and I'll come back when we know this down with, uh, an estimate from the consultants on the finances, as, as Councilmember Clark mentioned, we're hoping maybe through fundraising, sponsorships, that sort of thing, uh, we can, you know, raise the funds to build it. As far as, once the park's done, and I'll be honest with you, you know, some of these sites, you know, I'm paying tree green out there to, to mow lawns and to do other things, I'm just changing the use, you know, if I, I, I can't imagine it's going to have a severe impact. As long as I have volunteers that can help with the garbage and keeping things in the cans and keep the plastic bags stocked, those sorts of things, I think this is going to be the occasional fixing a damaged fence, something like that. But as far as maintenance impact and operation ongoing, I, I see it as pretty much of a wash, to be honest with you.
Okay, uh, we've heard from all the council members, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public and before we do another round of, uh, hearing the council members, really quickly, I'd like to give my comments, I'm supportive of the idea, appreciate the work. I would like to echo Deputy Mayor Kocoviac's comments, though, that, um, I'm concerned about the impacts on neighborhood houses. I mean, these people, obviously, they have their house there, they didn't, they bought their house without knowing that a dog park might be put there, so I, I'm very concerned about that and so I'd be, um, appreciative of if there are any options that would have no impacts on surrounding residences, if that, if that would be a possibility. With that, I'd like to open it up to any public comments, so then we can kick it up around with the council members' comments, I try, so.
Ed Dacey, um, I'm a member of the Parks Board and, but I like, I'm just kind of speaking on my own, but just the process, at least I went through on coming up with recommendations. The Park Board, we all got together and we looked at parks and came up with the two that you see before you. Now personally, I said, gee, I looked at every park in the city where we could put a park, a dog park. Now, that's a little misnomer because I didn't even consider Triangle Park. Now, that one, I just, you know, I neglected looking at it, I'll say that. My criteria was a park that the city controlled, the park department controlled, that we were not disrupting an existing program of the park. Which sort of, when I was looking at Mosher, there was no way to fit it in there. We had comments at the meeting about why not Lake Burian Park? And that, I, I obviously dismissed because we have concerts in the park there, we have late night movie in the park there, we have practices there. Arbor Lake was high on my list. With the big grassy area at the north end, but parking was an issue at Arbor Lake. I got down to supporting Hazel Valley because there was parking close by a Puget Sound Park. The program that was being disrupted at Hazel Valley existed a block away and it was a walking program. If you're there to walk, you can walk a block, was my thought. Uh, Seven, Seven Heights we considered, but again, we don't fully own that. There was some interesting challenges there, I would love to have presented, but again, it wouldn't work. So that's just, we were looking at things, Salmon Creek and Hazel Valley really were the two that came to mind. Lakeview has some interesting potential, but the school district, I know, is always a challenge. And the expense. We have a group of people, you saw a lot of them here with their dogs, who are committed to raise the money to build it. If we get into where they also have to raise money to demolish a lot of things, you're going to be talking city money. And we're tight on city money. So that's sort of was my thought process, I'm not speaking for the board, that was just sort of where I was coming from, thank you.
But Mr. Dacey, quick question, did you consider Nira at all, because a couple of times?
No, I didn't, uh, that's a commercial area, uh, the Parks Department really doesn't consider, control it, it's, uh, Port of Seattle and this city economic development, and I was kind of, I didn't even think of it, but in my mind, I'm going, Port of Seattle for permission? Uh, they haven't always been the most cooperative agency with the city, though I know Rose will disagree with me on that, she loves them.
If I could make, you know, one comment, you brought it near a couple of times now. I, I have had some initial discussions with Maya, regarding the Nira site, and I know with the park development and the trail use, there's already a lot of concern, uh, from the board's perspective, well, especially from the FAA's perspective, as far as bringing in, uh, uses, that bring a lot of folks into a nice, uh, particular area within the flight zone. Her initial reaction, I mentioned the dog park, was the dogs would be great to stop the people, and that's kind of the FAA's feelings about that, so it's, it's definitely something I could ask a little further, but the initial reaction is, uh, they, they really don't want us to bring in a whole lot of hotness and impacts into an area like that.
Okay, thank you. Good Space Guy?
Uh, my name is Good Space Guy and when I read the proposal for the unleashed dog parks, these two, two locations, I thought, well, two is better than one because two would decrease the, uh, use at each park, that would affect the neighbors. Uh, so I thought, well, more than one is better to diffuse the use throughout Burian. But it seemed to me a, a long distance for the people from the south of Burian to go all the way to the north. So I also thought that a more, uh, a central location, uh, would be desirable. Uh, in regards to these two, uh, locations, uh, the south of the two that we're discussing today is called Hazel Valley on, where access is on 126th Street. And it shows that, that it looks like there's limited parking there. I have experience in Bellevue, uh, north of the Bellevue Central Library or Regional Library, there's a park about two or three blocks, uh, north of the Bellevue Library. That is served centrally located in neighborhood, the park is surrounded by private residences. And to solve the limited parking at that location, what Bellevue did is they made the parking perpendicular on the street. So you just drive, drive down the street, take a right turn into your parking space, and so that, by having perpendicular parking, it greatly improves the parking at that small neighborhood park. And it seems to have solved the parking problem. So the Hazel Valley park location seems ideal for perpendicular parking, uh, to solve the parking problem. Now, the Salmon Creek location, which is the northern of the two locations under discussion this evening, it appears that, uh, that Salmon Creek location has a lot more parking on 116th Street. And, uh, but it's been mentioned that there's sports facility across the street that sometimes takes up the parking. So again, if one established perpendicular parking at the Salmon Creek location, that would not only provide more than adequate parking for the park users, but would also provide additional parking for the sports users, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rob Johnson, I've been here for, I think, fifteen years since I've been here longer. I think we need to do a dog park and I really do like the Hazel Valley park because there is adequate parking, like Steve was saying, I, I'm a constant user of West Prest. And it's about the same distance to walk from the parking lot to the small dog park. And as far as dog noise goes, my dogs only make a few barks and then they begin, they play with their dog, their friends, and that's it. But there's also the economic issue in that. When I go to West Prest, I usually stop at Dub C Coffee and get a coffee and a human treat. And if I'm going there, I'm not going to come back here in frequent, Burian Press or Starbucks or some other retail here. So you, you can chew on that for a while, but, you know, I just really think that, I've been to the both locations and I was really impressed with the thought of Hazel Valley as a dog park. That's my two cents, thank you.
I'm Ray Downs, I, as a city of Burian resident, um, I'm supporting the dog park as well, um, and I support the Hazel Valley, mostly the reason why is for financial. As a Burian resident, I want to spend as little money as possible for a project like this. Um, the city has already budgeted funds annually to support the Grandview Park with materials and labor, so we have already money there for maintenance that we can use. The city already has funds allocated in the budget to actually maintain this current park as it is, so that's not going to take away. Um, if we designate a park like Hazel Valley that already has existing water supply, you don't have to worry about running water lines or putting in a new meter. If you designate this group that's working to, um, be part of this nonprofit, then you can help them, um, if you designate them to raise the funds for the materials and the labor that it's going to take. that it's going to take for this park to be established. If you direct staff to create a punch list for goals and timelines for this group to meet, they would be welcome to that. Create a long-term agreement with this group and the city for continued maintenance after the park has been established. This is a low-cost project. All we have to do is designate a park for this group to sink their teeth in and to raise funds to create.
Thank you.
I'm Kelly Bassin. I've been living here for about forty years, all my life. So I got a dog recently and the dog likes to run in my backyard, just isn't big enough. And so I got thinking about that. And there's a lot of apartments in the city, a lot of condos, and their dogs don't have anywhere to go run. So that's maybe one consideration you can think of. I like the Hazel Valley site as well, for a lot of reasons. And I don't know, just choose a park for us and we'll get to work and we'll make it great for you guys. That's what I'd say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments on this one then? Alshur, go ahead.
I've lived here in Buryan for sixteen years. And I am, I just wanted to say I'm happy to see the commitment, the time we're taking to look into this. I expected it to be a done deal and nobody was looking at anything. And I see that all the council members have looked into it and I appreciate that. I live by Salmon Creek Park, I'm against having the park there. We have the baseball in the summer, the kids. We already have a problem with the parking there. They come with not only the kids themselves, but the families to watch them. The parking is horrendous, you can hardly get through. They don't park correctly, I mean, who does? And we live on, right around the corner and 118th continues, it's a private street. They can't park there, so they come around to Sixth Place Southwest, which is a pretty narrow street, and park. And then we're stuck getting in and out. It's difficult. It's not good. And also, we have two little dogs. Most of the neighbors want, have small dogs, small pets. I've talked to them, they don't want the big dogs there. My dog has already been attacked by a pit bull on 100, on Sixth. There's extension there, the five-year-old there. I really don't want any more big dogs coming and running around there. It's, I just hope Hazel gets a little bit of that. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've got a few more topics tonight, then we'll move on then to our next discussion item, which is a review of CARES operational evaluation. Thank you very much, Mr. Bass.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, council member. I'm in the management and the city manager department. The purpose of this agenda item on council package, page twenty-five, is to bring to council the operation review report by Denise McFicker, deputy director of the Humane Society of Tacoma and Peace County. A bit about a background. At the November third, two thousand twelve meeting, council directed staff to hire Denise McFicker to conduct an operation review of CARES. Denise, as she referred to be called, conducted the review over a period of two days, February twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Denise reviewed CARES in all aspects, ranging from field services, animal intake, animal care, animal controls, and others. Staff would like to present to council a powerful presentation that will take council through the highlights of the report. To begin, staff will talk a bit about the background of service provided by CARES to the City of Buryan. Just last Friday, staff received service statistic from the regional animal services of King County or RAS that staff will include in the PowerPoint that council does in finding the package. Staff will then talk about the finding of the reports and talk about the improvement recommendation made by Denise McFicker. Ms. Deborah George, executive director of CARES, is in attendance tonight. If council has any questions for her. A background of how we come about today is in June two thousand eleven, City of Buryan and CARES signed a contract for three years service from June two thousand eleven through May of two thousand fourteen. Another highlight I would like to point out is that the cost saving as estimated by RAS in June two thousand twelve is come out to be about three hundred forty-one thousand dollars plus RAS going to keep the licensing fee. And the current contract that we have with CARE is a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And the City of Buryan would keep the licensing fee. So the cost saving to the city by contracting with CARE is about three hundred sixty thousand per year.
Could I pause here? That's one thing I wanted to point out to council. Previously, we talked to you about the cost of the contract. What we didn't do was subtract out, or take into account the licensing fees that we get. As Jan just said, the city receives between sixty and seventy thousand dollars in life and fees that remains with the city that we apply to the cost of the CARES contract. So the net, out of general fund cost of this service, the CARES service, is about sixty thousand dollars a year. The, when we, if, when a city contracts with RAS, which is the King County Animal Control, King County keeps the license fees, so that would be sixty to seventy thousand dollars in addition to the contract cost. And that's where Jan came with the total that you see in the whole point three, the three hundred sixty thousand dollars per year in additional costs if we go with King County. So I just want to make that very clear. And as Jan said, we refreshed these stats. So significant in the savings to this contract.
In number four, in two thousand eleven, there is some statistic about the number of calls received by RAS and by CARE. This is an important piece of statistic because King County used the number of calls and the population number in each city when they estimate how much it would cost that city to join into the regional animal services of King County. And, but to talk about services, so the way King County do is that they divide their, the King County into several regions. And the region in that, in this area, they have two animal control officers that serve six cities and incorporate area. In our city, we have one dedicated animal control officer for the city. This is the new information that I have just received last Friday. So in this, in this slide, you will find the information about the council service that I mentioned earlier. But just some numbers to compare is the number of service calls. As you can see, the city population is about five percent of King County. But the, now the, the population that they serve by RAS, but the number of calls we receive here is about fifty-three percent. It's a phenomenal high number. In terms of head return to owners, we return about twenty-eight percent back to owner versus RAS about sixteen percent. This, the number that we return to owner versus the number that we take in with the animal intake number and the utilization rate in the bottom.
So I'd like to pause on this as well. So we just got this information and we'll likely bring it to you again in a slightly different format. Interesting, if you look at the service calls in the center of the column, you'll see that our city generates about half the number of calls as the service area that includes more than a million people. Our residents demand a lot of their animal control service. Adopted out, fifty-one percent of the CARES animals are adopted out as compared to fifty-three percent, so basically the same. And we'll bring those stats back to you in a better format next time around. Return to owners, twenty-eight percent compared to the county's sixteen percent. And then the donation rate, nine percent compared to thirteen point six. The raw data speaks very well for this service.
I did a bit about the experience and expertise that Denise McFicker has on this area of animal care and control. She has been working for the Humane Society since nineteen seventy-seven and currently is the deputy director of the organization. So the main, the, in the, in the report that she submitted to us, there, at the end, there are conclusions as well as in the, at the front page of the report, she also mentioning some of her observations and conclusions as well. Overall, she stated that CARE meets the public need, the public safety needs in terms of animal control and fulfilling the contract obligation with the city. And staff is listing number one through six. What are some of Denise's obligations that we have in our contract with CARE that they are fulfilling?
I'm sorry to keep interrupting Jan here, let's put this together and then we'll check. We asked Denise to focus in two main areas. We want to know, first of all, that the CARES was performing the contract. And that's what this slide gets to there. They are in fact performing all aspects of the contract and doing that very well. The second area has to do with the next slide Jan has, I think.
Denise McFicker also concluded that the animals under their CARE are being treated humanely and CARE meets the five free number of animal care.
And this was an area that I asked Jan to highlight because council mentioned this several times when we embarked on this project. That it was very important to council, no matter what we did, they wanted to know that the animals were being treated humanely. And this is the criteria, this is the industry standard for determining whether animals are in fact being treated humanely. And Denise very explicitly in her report said that the animals are humanized.
So in summary, Buryan Care meets the contractual obligation with the city and they are treating the animals humanely. As with any young organization, there are always rooms for improvement. And I am putting together two slides for this. One is to talk about the easy fixes that staff, that Buryan Care staff can do right away to, to make the immediate effect. And one through five as some other example, there are more.
So Jan didn't try to list everything that was in this very well-written and detailed document. There were things that could be easily fixed and I believe are starting to be fixed as we speak. And this is kind of the order of magnitude of those things.
For example, number three, I mean Denise McFicker was saying staff were just being over cautious. They don't have to remove the cats whenever they clean out the cages. You can just do spot cleaning and stuff like that. Doing so would stress you out the cat and maybe making them ill and whatnot. So another best practice, kind of advice, kind of thing for the staff.
Does anybody see one of them?
Some of the fixes, I think would take additional time or in funding. And so they are listing one through six there.
So these are, like, take, I don't know, but one I asked, you know, the specific issue that's in here. We've seen activity on the blog, for example, where the residents became very upset with Dan by the side of the road that CARES didn't pick up. The rest of the story is that CARES is not contractually required to pick it up. The Public Works Department is, and they do that when they want to get to it. So this was the sort of thing that Denise looked at and said, hey, you know, in the spirit of providing the sort of services people normally expect, this would be one, and this is something that the city ought to consider contracting with CARES to do. Then item number two, the training. When Ray became the ACO, it immediately got the kind of requisite training to do this. There's another training facility in our city. Is it?
The Training Center.
Well, Criminal Justice Center.
Yeah, Criminal Justice Center, that does statewide accreditation for this. We could not get access for Ray. We couldn't do it, and we tried. And Denise, on our behalf, called and made those arrangements. So Ray's going to be now able to have that sort of access. So from the beginning, we've run into those sorts of issues that are big solvency along, and we're very grateful for the help she gives there. You'll see that, if you go back to that, all of the items here require money. And they all make sense. And these are things that Denise said, you know, you don't have to do this. And chances are, remember, Ray's physical appearance, because he always dresses that way. But the fact is, we could tweak a few things, a lot of a great amount of money, and really up the level of service levels I've started.
The next step is for staff to discuss the review more in depth with CARES and with Denise McFicker. Then staff can return to council in April with specific recommendation on how to implement Denise McFicker finding. And this could include ongoing evaluation, additional funding, or some kind of modification to the contract, such as pick up the dead animal in the road, public spaces, as I mentioned.
There's a little, there are a couple of things here I wanted to mention. You can look, if you go back to that slide we had from the RAS commercials just now. The amount of savings being created here is phenomenal. It's way out of proportion to the actual contract cost. And we'll get, we'll put these in a little bit in context for you. But if you look at the things that you've asked about in the past, for example, the donation rate, or the counties, return to owners rate about the same, adopted out likewise. The calls for service, look at that, you know, two, two thousand eight hundred and sixty as opposed to five thousand four hundred countywide. So clearly, this organization is doing a, just a phenomenal job. And I think that needs to be pointed out and stated clearly. Another little item that came up in this report that I didn't know about, and I'll state here because probably nobody else will say it. The report where Denise discovered that Devon George has all this time been working for free without any sort of compensation. And that's very laudable, I would think I would have done it under these circumstances. But, you know, I think, you know, considering the service that this agency has provided for this community, I think we owe her a large debt of thanks or a debt of gratitude. Jan mentioned it will come back to you in April. Don't be surprised if I come back to you and say we want to implement some of the improvements that Denise has talked about and we want to, we want to add to their contracted work. I'm just telling council, it's, we're doing this for two years now. This is a classic, young, community-based organization that is just doing everything right. Lots of room for improvements, lots of rooms. But they're clearly passionate about this work, they're providing it very expensively, far less so than if it were in the public sector, and I think it's time we got behind it. Were they not doing this work, the hit to the general fund would be enormous. I want to remind council that we paid two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for direct human services. The cost of the county contract for taking care of animals in this town would be not quite double, but we're getting to approach that. So I just, I want to tell you, we're just likely on So I just, I, I want to tell you, we're just likely going to advocate for them because, uh, they've been through some very rough times. Uh, they've done a good year, and they're improving every day, and I'm no problem. And I, I think it's time to, uh, support them in a way that makes sure that they're going to be here for a very long time, as I hope they will.
So that's, it concludes the end of the high-end specification. Staff is ready to take my council comments and questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? There's, uh, council or public council members.
I wanted to comment, I like all the, uh, suggestions. There's a, a lot of small suggestions, and they're protecting our procedures, and I hope that CARES is going to be pursuing those. And I've thought, from the beginning, that a hundred and twenty thousand a year was a ridiculous number to try and get, uh, an, an actual animal control function for, and that the city was underfunding that. And I hope that we'll get some numbers that we can use so we can provide adequate funding for that and to, uh, make the changes that have been recommended.
Thank you, Mayor, come here.
Thank you. Uh, I thank my fellow councilmembers for this audit. I would like to, uh, it, it looks like we're going to have to increase funding for animal control to, to, um, try to meet some of these recommendations from the evaluation. In doing so, I'd like to reconsider, uh, King County Animal Control. Um, and I think the background numbers that we see on the overhead, um, statistically, it's challenging to compare. The euthanasia rate, uh, it sounds like CARES does not do a behavior assessment. So we're actually adopting, uh, possibly aggressive dogs out right now in King County. Um, that's probably attributing to some of their higher euthanasia rates. So, um, I think that it behooves us to consider, um, King County along with CARES when we are reevaluating the contract. And with the numbers that we're being provided, um, I'm hearing that C-TAC has an arrangement with county in King County that's different than the numbers that we're being provided. So I'd love to have a representative from King County come in front of the council and share what, what they're able to provide us. Thank you.
Councilmember McGilley.
I don't think that it's stressed often enough that this is a discretionary service. The City of Burien does not have to provide this service to the community. We've taken on this discussion very thoughtfully and carefully. We tried to put together a program and a plan. The first contractor didn't realize the intent and the amount of resources that needed to be put in the program. I'm very happy with what CARES is doing. I think it's cost-effective. I applaud Deborah for doing this for free. I think she's done a remarkable job. The one concern I have is there has been ongoing discussion, especially in the B-Town Blog, that's been extremely negative about CARES and about city services. I think that the blog is being used as a venue to look at certain commenters' understanding of government services. And a few people are trying to influence some very carefully thought-out decisions. I continue to have, uh, a difference of opinion with my fellow councilmember Kokovia when I look at the numbers in front of me, the service calls, the service costs, the population served. I just don't think that King County Animal Shelter is going to give us near the service that we have now with a group of very dedicated staff. I agree that in order to increase this program, there's going to have to be an increase in cost to cover the services that these folks are essentially doing for free. I really appreciate everything Mr. Helms is doing to support the two thousand eight hundred and sixty service calls that he's contributed to. The comments have been, this center isn't open twenty-four seven on this particular contract. That's not one of the requirements. I also understand that CARES is providing services for cats, which is also not part of the contract. We were very careful as a council when we designed this, that we didn't want to take on the cat population and problems. And I see that they have done it just because they think it's the right thing to do. So I'm hoping when we have this discussion in April, that we can look at a contract amendment that will give CARES some flexibility and some financing so that they can address all of the deficiencies that, uh, Ms. Mc-Vickers has come up with. And in the interest of providing the service this community wants, and I can't say this community deserves because this is not something that is prescriptive. It's simply because the City of Burien thinks that this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Block.
Well, we originally looked at this issue, um, my concern was the excessive amount of money that, uh, King County was asking to provide this service. So I'm glad that we looked at alternatives. My preference would have been for a professional animal patrol officer, similar to what they have in Des Moines, which, uh, ironically, uh, is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. But the council is actually going a different direction. So, anyway, um, I also want to, want to laud, uh, Ms. George and, and especially, uh, Mr. Helms. Um, you know, it's been a dream of mine today, Mr. Helms, since you've, uh, joined CARES. So thank you very much. Um, you're doing a tremendous job. Um, some of the things that were cited in here were, uh, upping the level of professionalism, such as uniforms, such things like that. I think that's something that would be useful for, for CARES to look at.
It's the one thing that they won't be able to do with Ray, it's just not going to work.
You know, if they may be wearing orange vests when that happens, you know, if it's part of the job requirement, it's easy, easy, but, uh, what do you do? And one of the things that, that's been brought up is, is funding. And my concern is, is, uh, right now, um, we're not selling enough licenses to cover our costs. As Mr. Martin pointed out, we're at fifty or sixty K.
Sixty to seventy.
Sixty to seventy thousand, I would have to say. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned because, you know, there aren't enough outlets in Burien to, to buy a license. Besides City Hall, there's Cross Security Place for Pets, and then White Senate, there's an outlet. And then Roman Park, there's an outlet. And I think that one thing that we need to look at is, is making the availability of, uh, pet licenses a lot easier. Uh, this is an important part of our revenue stream, and, uh, I think that this program should be self-supporting. You know, there's, there's been talk about, uh, the funding issues with CARES. Uh, one suggestion I'd like to make, right now, our present program calls for a two-dollar fee to pay to the vendor. I'd like to suggest that, uh, that one-time fee be raised to five dollars to, uh, increase the incentive to sell pet licenses. Also, uh, CARES may want to look at that as a fundraising, uh, opportunity. I've talked about partnering with other, uh, nonprofits, uh, use this as a fundraising opportunity. And also, we need to, uh, do more to reach out to the citizens. Citizens shouldn't have to come to City Hall, we should be able to go out to them. So I'd like to see us expand, uh, the venues where, uh, we sell pet licenses, such as, uh, the auto licensing center here in Burien, uh, some grocery stores, all the pet stores. Um, I, uh, yeah, it, it's important. I feel that this program is self-supporting. And anything we do to increase revenue above that, uh, is more money for, uh, supporting our animal control program. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I too would like to thank Ms. George and Mr. Helms and the rest of the staff and volunteers for the work they have done. I, uh, have visited over there, and, uh, I have been very impressed with, uh, with their, uh, facility and with their service. When we started in, uh, with the discussion about what to do about animal control, we had no real idea of what it was going to take because we, uh, have contracted with King County. And we're to the point now where we realized that we have a good, um, a good service model. Uh, and I, I do feel that we need to add, um, add funding to that. I'm, I am very proud that Burien took a step away from King County. Decided to go with the local nonprofit. I realized a nonprofit was being formed as they were doing their work. It takes a long time to get a nonprofit form. I spent over a year, uh, with a couple of other people forming a different nonprofit. So I know that that was not happening overnight, but while they've been doing all of that work, they were also serving the city. And, um, uh, I was always very impressed by that. I have looked at the blog, and it seems to me that the folks that have written negatively to CARES on the blog probably haven't been there, haven't, uh, looked at the facilities, have not really spent time, uh, understanding our contract and what we expected of CARES. And so, um, uh, for a long time, I did not pay attention to their comments. Because of that, I feel that comments need to be made with knowledge and not with just bashing because somebody wants, uh, a certain thing done. Uh, so through all of that, through the number of times that Ms. George has been unfair between, she has continued to provide, uh, I mean, a, a, a good level of service through our community. And again, when, uh, staff brings back their proposals for the, uh, improvements that might be needed, I expect those improvements to come with, uh, a dollar.
Okay, thank you. So we've heard, uh, around comments from council, I just want to make sure that, uh, if anyone wants to comment, they have the opportunity to do so. Otherwise, we'll move on. Um, Good Space Guide, if you want to comment, you need to be more decisive than that.
You're a little wishy-washy.
Yeah.
Mayor, let's, let's, guys, can I, can I get consensus from the council around the question whether we're going to pursue a King County visit or not? I just assume not, uh, bringing back. Uh, the proposals that I've been focusing on have to do with enhancing and continuing on with CARES, not the opposite, and I just don't want to waste my time by, uh, perception and, uh, doing something wrong.
We want to, want to make some offer. That's why we're moving on here.
Okay, so I see, uh, there are, uh, also, also, we have the issue that the contract ended two thousand fourteen, right? So, I think, I think it was, oh yeah, I think the council was interested in, uh, the town. I'm sorry? I, I have this one. Okay, so, uh, who's this guy?
Uh, my name is Good Space Guide, and as I was reading in the package and hearing the testimony, I thought, well, um, your city council is, uh, making it easier on the taxpayers by, um, contracting this service out to, uh, private organizations, um, which is good. So I like it when, uh, when the burden on the taxpayer is decreased. And I was surprised to hear that we have a training facility in Burien that refused to, uh, uh, train our animal control officer. But I didn't understand why. Uh, and, uh, so that was a question floating around my mind. Why would the training facility in Burien refuse to train our animal control officer? And now, and having just one animal control officer, uh, seems inadequate to me. And here we have so many people in Burien who are unemployed. Uh, so it seems to me that, uh, one can, uh, should be trying to hire some of the unemployed of Burien to assist in the animal control officer function. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember McGilley. Oh, I'm sorry, uh...
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
I certainly agree with councilmember Block about fundraising opportunities. And I hope that CARES is considering that strongly. But one thing that I'd like to note to the audience, that the professional animal control function in Burien, in Des Moines is through their police department. They are now facing something more than a fifty thousand dollar, uh, lawsuit because one of the police, one of the police officers who should be professionally trained for animal control shot Rosie. And it's been a very sad occurrence for Des Moines. I would hope that using professional animal control folks who carry guns is probably not the solution that Burien is looking for.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
I'm a little concerned that Rose has made the comment that people that are writing on the blog don't have knowledge about what they're talking about. I posted a letter on the blog today, it has numerous items that were found to, where CARES was deficient. Every one of those items came directly from Ms. McVicker's report. I didn't make any of it up. I also am concerned about the fact that it's only costing sixty thousand a year to run CARES, according to Mike Martin. I know Ray Helms has paid forty-five thousand, which leaves fifteen thousand for all the vet visits, all of the lease payments on the property, all of the other salaries.
That wouldn't work.
No. So when you say sixty thousand is what we pay as a city after the return of the pet license fee?
That's correct.
How do you, how does that account for, like, what I said, the twenty-five hundred a month for the property, the forty-five thousand a year to pay Ray? Is training, the vet bills, the food?
If you'd like, I'll explain that.
Okay.
Um, so our contract with CARES is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's our deal, so ten thousand dollars a month we give to them. We get about sixty to seventy thousand dollars in revenue that we apply to that contract.
From the license fees?
That's correct.
Okay, so you said that leaves sixty thousand in our pocket, though.
That's correct.
That doesn't account for the forty-five thousand a year salary?
So if you add the sixty thousand dollars that we get from license, and the sixty thousand we get from the general fund, you get a hundred and twenty, and that's what we pay CARES.
Right, but, okay. So you get sixty thousand back?
That's correct.
Out of the hundred and twenty that you pay?
You, so, listen...
You pay them ten thousand a month, works out to a hundred and twenty a year.
Big numbers. So our deal with CARES is a hundred and twenty. They don't care whether we get a nickel in licensing fees, it's got nothing to do with that. So our, our contract with them is we give them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The source of the hundred and twenty thousand dollars from us is we get about sixty thousand dollars from licenses that people come in and buy. And then the general public pays sixty thousand dollars from the general fund. So sixty license plus sixty general fund is a hundred and twenty. And that's how we pay for the hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I still think their expenses are a lot higher than what we're talking about, though, for...
And I think that's right.
You know, the salaries, office staff have got visits, the leasehold on the property, all of the food and the salaries for Ray, the salary and the training, the van, the maintenance, the insurance, and everything that you're saying works out to just ten thousand a month?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're not running in the red at all?
They're not.
They're at zero. Cause I, I saw some big credit bills when I looked at the audit.
They're not running in the red, and the audit didn't say they were running in the red. And the audit didn't say they were writing in the red.
Well, they had a $13,000 credit card bill.
They're not writing in the red.
And some of their debts. Okay. So I just want to say, I've visited the facility. I've seen what's going on in there. I've been there several times. So when I read the articles, I read what I see. I wrote what I saw from Ms. McVickers. And I think that people are writing from knowledge and concern about things going on with the pets that are in Burian, and they're not making things up, and they're not trying to go after the council. They're just talking about things that matter to us. I'm a pet owner, and I don't want my pet falling into some kind of a bad situation. You know, if it were to get loose and be taken in by CARES, they're not going to label it. They are not going to properly describe it. According to what Ms. McVickers said, they're not going to keep it necessarily away from other animals that might be sick. They're not going to clean its area with proper chemical mixing, et cetera. So I will agree with you that there are some areas that they need to do things differently. That does not make them negligent or doing a bad job for putting animals in harm's way. I do have been an animal owner for over 40 years. My house has seldom ever been without an animal. And anytime that I would have needed, I would have had, I would have been perfectly comfortable with CARES picking up an animal of mine and taking care of it when I got there. Or if I have you, I have no reservation at all about the quality of the service that CARES is offering in terms of taking care of the animals and their care. Okay. Well, I do know that they had concern about the quarantine areas back when the health department was looking at it. It's been going on now for a year. It's still ongoing. It's still being a concern that's being written about.
Some of these things are concerns that are going to be addressed, but they are not being of loss to the extent that you set them down. You give them the opportunity to fix the few things that were listed by Ms. McVickers.
Okay, and then I also noticed that.
Point out that Ms. McVickers has like a 25, 30-year history of working professionally. So she knows where she speaks.
Right.
And I don't want to be made for it. We do have a council meeting.
Okay, I did think, though, it was a good idea for the council to reconsider King County contracts, since CTAC got it for $110,000, which is even less than what we're talking about going to CARES.
I would like to be a little bit more technical in terms of how King County come up with different estimates for different cities. A long time ago, King County used a model of 50/50. 50% is based on population and 50% based on service call. And after a lot of outcry from cities of how come I get this kind of rate, and how come the other city get this kind of rate, King County readjusted their model to be 80/20. 80% is based on service call and 20% is based on the population number. So if you compare the city CTAC or DeMoyne or Renton and whatnot to our city, they may have less population or more population than us. But when King County look at the number of service call that they have to manage, I'm talking about service call, not excluding follow-up or information call, that play into the factor of the number of $341,000 per year to provide service to our city.
Does the city of CTAC keep their licensing fees, or does the county?
I believe the county does.
So how is the population difference between CTAC and Burian? There's 33,000 in CTAC.
What I'm saying is that the calls for services is driving. Our calls for service are extraordinarily high. That's the part that drives the cost of contract.
Yeah, that's 80% of the determining factor of they want to use the estimate because beside number of population.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
My name is Mary Ann Sessner. And thank you. I have also posted on the B-Town blog from firsthand experience from going to CARES and having situations not work out very well. So now I'm also a little offended that you said people are posting without firsthand knowledge. But anyway, I'm just hoping the council reads Denise McVickers' report. It was very interesting, and it made me wonder about these numbers. Can I get a copy of this slide? Is that possible? But just the, well, it says in here that CARES has a software program which they may or may not be using for animal intake. They use a lot of paper and pencil, maybe double posting animals. So that kind of makes me question all of this data. And then the fact that CARES had 2,800 calls for 48,000 residents compared to double that number for a million people? You said that Burian demands a lot from its animal control? I mean, it looks like Burian is extremely high maintenance, so I question all of those questions.
Just to clarify, Denise did note exactly what you noted, that they're doing a lot of hand injury. She never said that there was anything suspect about the veracity of their numbers.
No, but she did know, you know, that it could be, that animals could be put in there twice, or some animals might not be in there.
She never suggested that the numbers or the statistics they're giving us were in error at all. She just said that they could be doing it more efficiently.
Right, exactly. Just please read this.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, my name is Pat Lamoyne, and I'd just like some clarification on some of these numbers, because I'm looking at them and I'm a little confused here. And everybody seems to be talking about the number of service calls between Burian and King County versus, I'd like to compare that to the animal intake. And I guess what defines a service call? Is that somebody's saying, "We have a problem animal. Could you come and take care of that?" In which case, I would like to compare the animal intake for King County. If those are correlated together, wouldn't you say that King County, you take the 4,754, divide by the 5392, and you'd have a success rate percentage? And do the same thing with the 2860, or 340, 304 divided by the 3860? Wouldn't that give you a success rate for the CARES here in Burian? Or what exactly defines?
Yeah, you know, I really wasn't satisfied with the way we displayed those numbers. We just got them on Friday. When we come back in April, we'll break them down so we can clarify for you.
Okay. Like I say, it just seems accurate between the difference of it. So thank you.
There are a couple. So there are the number of animals that still in their care, and also the number of animals that stayed on arrival, for example. Some of those numbers attributed to the total number of animal intake.
We'll bring back that information and kind of clarify for you. Those are good numbers.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Ross.
Okay, I wanted to add a few comments on what just been going on. For one thing, according to the city profile, CTAC has 27,000 people, which is just over half of Burian's population. But I was looking at the numbers on this slide, and it confirms what I've thought for a while, that we're really trying to do the animal control on the cheap. You compare the numbers on there, the budget numbers compared to what's been done, we're paying $50 per call compared to King County's paying over $1,000 per call. We're paying $400 for each animal that's picked up compared to over $1,000 per animal. We've got one officer for a population of 48,000 compared to about one officer for 90,000 people for King County. I was not terribly surprised that there were a number of efficiencies found in the inspection that what you do an audit for is to tell you where you need to pick up. I mean, it's just like if you own a building, the fire department comes through and inspects, they're going to find things that you fix. And my expectation is that CARES will do that. The problem is, we're doing it on the cheap to the point that I hope they have enough money to do it. And they're spending right now, what I got out of the audit, is a little over $120,000 a year because they're getting our cash, plus they're getting some contributions, plus they're getting quite a bit in time contributions. So they're not doing it on the $120,000 a year. And it's only costing us $60,000 because we're keeping the license fees. So, and I wanted to respond to Jack's point about trying to raise license fees. I think based on $60,000 and $120,000, you'd have about triple the license fees that you're collecting in order to get enough money to actually support CARES for license fees. King County doesn't even attempt to do that with its animal control, which is why cities pay so much for it, and they keep the license fees. The, and you run into problems. I mean, do we really want CARES to turn its focus away from picking up distressed animals and doing what it does, and turn it into more of a license fee collection agency, which is more of what King County Animal Control does? And the other thing, however, is that if you raise the license fees, I suspect that, like anything else, as the price goes up, compliance goes down. More people will say, "Well, I gotta pay $50 or $75 or $100 for a license. I'm just not going to buy one." So I'm not, I like the idea of making licenses available through more outlets and hopefully increasing license sales out. I don't think we can, I don't think it's at all realistic to try and count on paying for all of our animal control through license fees. And I think we've been doing it on the cheap too long, and we need to put up enough money so that CARES can do the job that we want them to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Ross.
I think it's unfortunate that my comments were, in the sense that I did not say raise the license fees. So we have to sell the licenses. Right now, it's very difficult for a person to buy a license. I shouldn't say it is more difficult, but they have to make an extra effort to buy a license. Let's see, White Center Licensing, UFC down in Longley Park across the street from City Hall. They have to reach out to buy a license. What I'm proposing is that we increase the number of outlets that people are able to buy a license at. And through that, get to sell more licenses so we can raise more revenue. As a fundraising effort, I think it'd be a great, great thing for CARES and its volunteers to push for. I've noticed that there are a number of animals that are publicized on the blog and howling times that CARES is looking for their owners. How many of those animals have already pet licenses?
You asking me?
Yeah, or Deborah.
You know, probably about 25% of all the owners who took up the license. Well, we, these are licenses in our practice. We sell between five and 10.
Yeah, well, I think that there's an opportunity for you to use that as a fundraiser.
We had talked about that. It's certainly something we can bring back next time we come back.
I think tonight, as you helped, we did, licenses could be purchased and renewed online also.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you very much. Sign off for the comments. I'll just wrap up. One comment I would like to point out is that animal control is something that local governments have always struggled mildly with, and King County is no exception. They've historically had serious, serious problems. And frankly, I think to be able to start this for the amount of money we're spending is remarkable. So I would like to applaud Ms. George, Mr. Helms, and all the volunteers that have done this. So with that, though, sign off for the comments. We'll move on to the next topic. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Again, this is management analysis. The purpose of this agenda item on page 37 is for council to review and to discuss ordinance 579 to give reduced pet license fee to disabled persons. Currently, our municipal code provides reduced pet license fee to senior residents, but not to disabled persons. This ordinance would enable us to give a $15 license fee to disabled persons. This license fee, just like the fee for senior residents, is a lifetime fee for altered pets. And the applicant must show the proof of disability, which could be an ADA, a peer intensive card, that could be social security disability benefit, or it could be verification from a healthcare professional. Staff also would like to take this opportunity to update the municipal code to reflect the correct rate for altered pets, which is $20 instead of $15. So this includes the introduction of ordinance 579. Staff are ready to take on council comments and questions.
This is largely administrative. Somebody brought it to our attention that we didn't have a special license fee for disabled persons. We don't get lots of requests for this, but it seems easily fixable.
Councilmember Raker.
Could you repeat that last change you said about $20?
Staff would like to update the municipal code to reflect the correct rate for altered pets, which is $20 instead of $15.
There's an incorrect rate in the U.C. It needs to be corrected to $20.
Okay, thank you. And then I do have a follow-up question. Maybe it's just the way I'm reading the ordinance. It appears that in the last line, that unaltered licenses would be $50, altered would be $20. And then if it's a juvenile person purchasing license, a senior or a disabled person, it would be 0 for general and 15 for disabled and senior. Question I have, it sounds like the senior citizen and the disabled person could have an unaltered.
No, no, sir. We adopted our policy procedure from King County, and King County specifically said that the pet have to be altered, and the applicant must show proof. So we do require that for our city.
Councilmember Ross.
I actually have the same question about, as you mentioned altered, but didn't mention that in the ordinance here. Do we need to make a change in the ordinance to specify that, or?
I guess we can, we could do that.
There is an ambiguity, I agree, that could be corrected just by inserting the word altered, both in the $15 rate for senior and the $15 rate for the senior.
And then I also have a question about juvenile. Now, are we talking about a person that's underage or an animal that's not an adult?
An animal.
Okay.
Under six months.
So families can't go and license all their pets with the kids without paying.
It's a good idea, not. Good watch.
Councilmember Block.
I'd like to see this on the consent agenda with where it's altered, where it was before given.
I'd like it also. Thank you. With clarifying the price changes and the including altered in both, it's also hard to tell about the lifetime, so can we include that also? Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a couple of approvals for consent agenda. Any additional? Okay, so with that, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Helms. And we'll move on to the last item tonight, which is further discussion of districting.
Yes, sir. The purpose of this agenda item on page 41 is to respond to council wish to further discuss the issue of council districting. Tonight, staff bring back answer to council question from the February 25th meeting. The first question was, what would happen if there were no candidates from a district? The answer is, if there were no candidates from a district at the initial formation of the district. of the district, then one of the incumbents would be appointed to fill the district vacancy per RCW twenty-nine A twenty-four two oh one. All the positions could be filled by council appointment per RCW two point one seven point zero seven zero. If there were no candidates from a district at the subsequent elections, then per RCW twenty-nine A twenty-four two oh one, the incumbents could remain in office until the next election or until he or she resigned, at which time the vacancy would be filled by council appointment. The second, the second question or the request from council was to direct staff to present some possible districting map. So on page forty-one through page forty-six, staff attached some illustrated maps of the city with seven, six, five, and four districts. Please keep in mind that this is purely an exercise from an IT standpoint, just to see whether we can do this by combining older precincts. The answer is yes, we can. However, if we want to do this as easily as possible, then we might need to consider combining census tracts. Also, the King County Election Office told us that they need to receive the adopted district boundaries by April first. So this concludes the introduction of the districting issue, and staff ready for council comments and questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Councilor Ross?
Okay, I have some comments. The first one had to do with this whole altering or letting elections or no way in advance. The statute decided that it refers to altering precincts. If the, if districts were created, what I get from that is that districts were created just by using existing precincts without changing the boundaries of any existing precincts, then that would not apply. So are you saying that, that that's not correct, that it would require all this advance notice to the election board, even if we weren't altering any of the precincts?
Yes, that's the word that we, we received from King County Election Office.
This is a really squishy area, and to get this information took a great deal, however, in reminding them that we just installed a ballot box at one hundred and fifty-second for them. But there, to your point, though, I think some of this is to accommodate the fact that they're sending out ballots to places that they haven't sent them out for, and they're sending them out differently in order to make that deadline. This was the deadline they knew us.
Okay. And that works out to be April first?
Roughly three weeks before.
Yes, as you can see, that's the cabinet, kind of explained it, to how we get to be April first.
I think it's, I don't think that they're accustomed to having something come this close to the pushing the deadline, so they did their best to give us this information.
Well, yeah. I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves if we start talking about what the district should be drawn, like before you even get to the point of deciding when to do them. With respect to the issue about what happens if there's vacancies, the statute provides very clearly what happens to the existing seats. If the, you know, if one ward is being represented by more council members than the number which is entitled, those having insurance on expired terms would be assigned by the council to ward who there is a vacancy. Everybody's gonna have a seat. And then when it comes up to the next election, the city member keeps their seat. If no one applies, and no one applies in the extended period, then the city member keeps their seat. If they resign or refuse to take the oath of office, then a replacement will be appointed by the remaining members of the council, the same as happens if somebody dies or resigns while they're in office. So we're not gonna have big vacancies or special elections. So I just, I just wanted to make sure those things are clear.
Any further questions or comments from the public? Councilor Block.
Yeah, this, this issue of whether or not to provide our cities in wards, I feel it's not a decision in that, because council should be making. I feel it's a decision that should go before the voters, so I wanted to make my stand on that very clear.
Okay, seeing no further comments, we get that back, Councilor Block. Hold on, you know, hold up, Councilor Clark, then we get to this again.
Yeah, I'll wait for next basic.
Okay.
My name is Good Space Guide, and I think the council of Burien faces many complicated issues. And changing the election system of council members from at large as we have now to election by wards is an unnecessary complication. So I'm very much opposed to the ward system that's been suggested, or district system. There's a principle called the KISS principle, keep it simple and sweet. One complicated issue that you have to deal with is the horrible unemployment situation in Burien. When you have long-term people unemployed in Burien, that is a complicated issue that you should be thinking about rather than creating complicated issues like the ward system. So stay with your present, I recommend that you stay with your present election system of at-large council members instead of going with the ward system. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Clark.
Thank you. This is a very complicated proposal. I want to make it perfectly clear that I agree with the idea of districting the city, and I wish we could call it districts instead of wards. However, I feel that we, at this point in time, do not have time to do the issue justice. So my recommendation to council is that we, we talk about forming a committee and how we would select members for that committee, how we would make sure that on that committee there is good representation citywide, that perhaps we hire a facilitator to work with the committee and have them give a date certain of when we need to have them return with a, with a recommendation to us. I think I would follow the principles that generally were in place when we have the ad hoc committee for the S and P. And so that's what I'm thinking right now.
Councilor Ross.
Okay, I wanted to, I agree with what Councilwoman Clark was just saying, this is, I don't think it's a terribly complicated issue, but it's a complicated decision, obviously. There's a, I sense a lot of fear over this. There's, I've heard feelings on both sides. The reading I've done has indicated that voting by districts, where you have the kind of disproportionate representation that Burien has had in the past, voting by districts is the way to cure that. The, and I would agree with the idea of setting up a committee specifically to study that and then report back to council on it. I would urge that such committee not have a council member on it.
I agree.
And it include members from every part of the city. The, and I want to point out one thing with respect to putting it up for an election, I don't think we can, if one of the cities is in the northbound. The statute says council of non-charter code city, et cetera, may invite city of wards or change the boundary of existing wards. It doesn't say anything about the people changing it, and if I understood that decision correctly, that means that we cannot put it up to a vote, it's a decision that the city council has to stand up to make.
I agree the city council has to make it, but that doesn't mean you couldn't have an advisory ballot.
Mr. Knudsen, we've debated advisory ballots for years, especially around annexation, and previous councils said, no, we aren't going to put an advisory ballot to decide whether annexation will come or go based on the Burien population. So that's one thing I just want to remind all on council, that advisory ballots have been something that the council has great difficulty with, and would certainly lead to a very involved discussion. I truly am concerned when I look at the distribution of council members, when we have five west of Ambon and two east of Ambon, and only one that's north of the true city center. I think this puts great bias into the decisions that are made. It's unfortunate that people don't consider running for council unless they're retired, or white, or are not bound by creating a source of income for their family. I think the city's been very fortunate in the council members we've had in the past, but we are not representing either the newly annexed area or the east side of our city, and I'm thinking that as we go through this discussion, maybe Ms. Robertson will bring us more reasons why districting is something that's going to make the council more aware of the areas that are truly not represented and haven't been represented in the past. So I'm very interested to see how this discussion unfolds.
Councilor Block.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, all due respect to Councilman Gillon, we're talking about the basic form of government, governance of our city. I think that citizens have a right to at least have an opportunity to at least advise us how they feel. So I feel it's wholly appropriate to at least have an advisory vote if we're not allowed to have a correct election in regards to this. As to the matter of attracting people to this position, I've already committed political rhetoric by suggesting this, I'm gonna point this out again. You know, we're, we're asked to do about twenty to thirty hours a week, you know, do this job. That's a significant amount of time. If you have a family, it makes it very difficult, or another job, to be able to do that. We're getting six hundred dollars a month for this, you know? We have to look at it realistically. Are we doing everything we can to make sure that we can attract people to this, to this job? People, I feel, want to serve, but they have other considerations like mortgages and families that they have to consider too. You know, you're absolutely right, you know, it is, it is unfortunate that, that, you know, the only people that can afford to serve are retired people, or wealthy people. So I think that we need to, well, I'm sorry, it's late, it's not coming out right, but, you know, it's just something that I think that we need to address, and that's our council compensation. You know, there are cities that are smaller that recognize this problem and compensate their council members that are higher rated than we do. And if we're going to be able to attract people for this job, we have to recognize that there is a certain amount of sacrifice in times, in time and finances, and that we need to address the issue also.
Mr. Clay, did you just call?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I did wish to comment. I think I just heard that if the council wanted to vote, the seven of you could vote for one of the other forms of government, whether it was a strong mayor, or whether it was the ward districting type situation. And it sounds like the city attorney, Mr. Knudsen, mentioned that it would unnecessarily, or could not go, might not go to a vote of the citizens. I'll throw another option at you. Whether it's strong mayor, or whether it's wards or districts, would we be able to get a citizen vote if that, either of those concepts were brought to you in the form of a petition or an initiative? And I wonder if Mr. Knudsen might have an answer on that.
When I made the comment about advisory ballots, I was just talking about implementing a ward system for selecting council members. I wasn't talking about changing forms of government. That has its own separate process.
Okay. Then I guess I'll ask the question, or throw the option out there a little differently. With regard to wards or districts, would a citizen vote be possible if it came to you by way of petition or initiative? That would be, and the reason I ask this question is, I believe either option needs to have a citizen vote. Thanks very much.
Well, I think that goes to the red light case that I was talking about, where the court said that, no. If the, if the statute says the council has to do it, then you can't put it off.
That point of information on the issue of changing form of government, from council manager to council mayor, the statute points out two paths. One is for the council to vote to put it on the ballot, or for a petition to be presented to the council by ten percent of the registered voters. Upon presentation of that petition, then it is required to be put on the ballot. So I'm just sending that for clarification for Mr. Clay.
Okay. Councilor Clark.
Back to the idea of the committee, I agree with Councilmember Robertson that we not have a council member on. I do think we need to have a lot of different people, and seven from seven different parts of the city, and then have them come back with the decision that council would have to act on before the end of this year, making the new board or district process applicable after this election. That's what I've been trying to push.
Okay. Councilor Ross, any other comments?
I agree with Councilwoman Clark. I was gonna comment, the discussion of mayor system and make the council, which goes quite a bit beyond the subject matter that we were discussing, and it'd be, I'll need for a different meeting later on.
I agree. Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. If we're considering, continuing this discussion, how much time and staff time have we put in so far? What's our, what's the dollar value, and what's the dollar value of going forward?
Yon, what did you say? Have you spent thirty hours on this so far? And you make eight dollars an hour?
We've got one of them.
So you're not volunteering like Ms. George? Where's your civic spirit?
I've been wanting to buy these tires.
It's a nice tire.
Deputy Mayor, Krovik's point as well placed, though. This is a major work plan matter, and it will take, if we're gonna give this the sort of diligence that a decision like this takes, I'm gonna ask council to arrive at a consensus to do this, because, Yon, and there'll be many people involved, including three of us sitting here, and we're happy to do it, but I'm gonna have to arrange the work plan because that will take a significant amount of time.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And so my view on it is, I, I think it's an issue that is worth considering. I'm concerned, I've heard from, frankly, from people on both sides of this issue since it's been brought up by Councilor Ross. And part of the concern that I've heard from people who favor districts is that they, one, they don't feel that their neighborhoods are being represented by the council who doesn't live in their neighborhoods. But also, I'm concerned that there's not even a discussion taking place between, the sense, the, the impression I've gotten from talking to people is that they don't even feel that there's an avenue for them to communicate with, uh, certain council members. And so that views aren't even really shared, and they would feel much more comfortable, and they told me they would feel much more comfortable if there was one of their neighbors that was on the council, um, discussing issues with them and not having to, um, deal with some of the issues we've got now with personal attacks taking place. I think Mr. Dacey made a very apt comment on this, that it's, it's become difficult, um, for a lot of people to take part and just communicate with council in an upper atmosphere. And I think that districting is a, uh, would be a way to address that. Uh, with that though, um, as far as a committee, I'm, I'm concerned about just appointing a committee, an ad hoc committee, um, that, um, have quite a bit of influence. Uh, so if we were going to appoint a committee, what I would ask that we consider, maybe just, uh, put it on the planning commission agenda. They, they have been, um, if we were going to consider that, but as, as far as timing, another thing I wanted to throw out there is that the state legislature is considering this issue right now. And so what I would ask is that we maybe wait and see what the legislature decides, whether that can form us, I think it will have to take place, uh, the legislature will post it in the next month or so. And then, and I bring this up as an item and discuss how we move forward, uh, if we want to move forward, and how we move forward. I agree with Mr. Warren's comment, that this is a very substantial issue that we would need to, uh, make a decision about if we want to move forward.
Well, I, I commented before that we have other important stuff to get done, I'd be fine with putting this off until June for more discussion.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Clark.
Um, is this something that the planning commission can take up? They are, um, that they deal with zoning, land use kinds of issues, is this appropriate for?
It's not in their job description, but I'm sure that they'd be happy to do it. And it wouldn't satisfy, council was interested in having people from different geographic places in the city that may not, uh, satisfy your wishes in there, but there's nothing that would prevent them from talking about it.
Um, I would be willing then to wait until June, does that mean we even have a further discussion?
I, I would like to.
The council wants, uh, at that time will know how the legislation's been proposed against the one forty-nine, uh, has come out and will probably have some analysis about that. It, it's suggested that there may be risks to cities who don't have districts who are not representative of their minority populations, and they cite the Akma case for that. So, uh, we'd be glad to bring that back in June and kind of bring it up to date on more all of that.
Okay. Is that acceptable to? You meant that's enough? Okay, so with that, I see no further comments, we will, um, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
All those who say, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.